Good evening, everybody. We're going to start the committee of the whole. And first up tonight is going to be a presentation to the city council from the PMLP we got in the LED street light conversion project and automatic reader meter reading project. The floor is yours.
Good evening, council. My name is Glenn Tuera. I'm the manager of the Peabody Municipal Light Plant. And I've brought a few of my coworkers here with me tonight. And we wanted to come before you.
In the screen.
Oh, sure.
Right in that light. Right in that light.
So we wanted to come before you tonight to speak to you about a couple of projects we have going on in the city right now. So it's a couple of large, very visible public projects. And we've just started the implementation of both of those this year. One of them is our system-wide public streetlight replacement project. We're going through the whole city. And we're going to replace close to 6,000 public streetlights, which are now high-pressure sodium. We're going to change those out to LED streetlights. The other project that we're working on, and we started a little bit earlier this year, is what we call our Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project, or AMI for short. And that project is a project where we're going again throughout the system. And we're replacing all of our older technology manually-read electric meters with a brand-new, fully automated two-way communication metering system. So the reason we wanted to come tonight is these are both, as I mentioned, very visible projects. We're going to be out on the public streets every day changing out streetlights. So people may go home in the morning, come back at night, drive down their street, and it's going to look completely different than it did before. Because the old sodium lights have kind of a yellow amber color, and the new LEDs are a white light color. And also with the metering project, we're going to be going to every home, every business, changing out the existing electric meter. So it has quite a visible impact on the community, on all of our customers and the public at large. So we wanted to come here tonight, let you know what we're doing, give you a little bit of information on the projects, let you know where we stand. Therefore, if you happen to get any calls from people in the neighborhoods, in your wards, that you'll at least know what's going on with the projects, and you'll be able to answer any type of questions that they have. So I'm going to start by having Roy Samos come up. He's our supervising electrical engineer. He's going to talk a little bit about the LED project. And then I'll come back and give you a little bit of information on the metering project. And please feel free to ask any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. Roy Samos, Peabody Municipal Light Supervising Electrical Engineer. So I'll just give you, got some bullet points about our project. Like Glenn says, it's approximately 6,000 across our entire distribution system, which I'm sure you guys know includes approximately half of Linfield as well. So it's a system-wide, street lighting retrofit project. So I'm just going to give you a little tiny bit of history. Between 1990 and 1992, PMLP did a complete conversion of all the existing fixtures that were sort of a bluish-white color back then. They were called mercury vapor. With the more advanced technology of the time, which was high-pressure sodium, HPS, which is an orangey-amber color that we predominantly have throughout the whole city right now. There's been a lot of technological advances in LEDs, as evidenced by, you almost have a hard time finding a conventional light bulb at a store these days. So in 2015, we did a pilot study that we did approximately 62 fixtures in a bunch of areas in Peabody and one area in Linfield. And we put little, like a no-parking sign, the size of a no-parking sign. We put one of those at every place where we did the pilot with a little bit of brief information and then a phone number. And if anyone had any contact, they could send an email to us. I believe of that one-year trial, I think we got one call, and I don't really think it was anything negative. That particular trial, we used what we thought was probably the best color choice. There's about three color choices on LEDs for roadway lighting. They're defined in a color spectrum, color temperature in degrees Kelvin. There's a point of reference. The HPS we have now is around, I think it's 2,200 degrees Kelvin. And the trial we did was 4,000 degrees Kelvin, which is a nice, clear, crisp, white light. The white light, it does a few other things for you in addition to, it helps with what's called color rendition. So it helps your eye distinguish colors better. And for years and years, we had always offered the mercury vapor for mostly car lots that where we do lighting programs for people that they pay per light for us to do area lighting. All the car lots always wanted the white light because you go see a red car and it looks gray under HPS. So the new LEDs have a good amount of color rendition, so you can truly depict colors at night. The other thing they do for you is they let you, like cameras and stuff, so security cameras interpret things that are kind of in a darker area a little better. So we're hoping, you know, that that's going to maybe improve safety a little bit. The other thing with the LEDs, too, is that the human eye, even if it was at the exact same lumen level, when one is white and one is yellowy-orange, your eye perceives the white light to be brighter, even if it isn't brighter. So we got a few of those advantages going on with this. Once we, then we heard about that there was a grant from the DOE, Department of Energy Resources, Massachusetts. And they had a program, and we got involved with a company called MMWEC, which is Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric Cooperative. They're from Ludlow, Mass. We do a lot of business with them day-to-day. So MMWEC administered the grant for us and kind of, you know, instead of, I think there's 17 communities that come in under the MMWEC program, instead of each of those communities doing all the grant paperwork and the submissions and all this, MMWEC did one big submission for everybody. And then, so we're through this MMWEC program. They get the grant money, then they dispense the grant money to us as we put up certain amounts of fixtures. The grant, I'm not going to go into details with it, but in a nutshell, it's a 50 percent grant on the price of the fixture. And it includes, the only thing it can be included is the actual fixture and the control for the fixture. In our case, it's a photocell. Turns the fixture on at dusk, shuts the fixture on at dawn. And, you know, there's a lot of other things that go with it. There's ancillary materials that go with the installation. That's not included. Police details, our labor. So all that's got to be kind of factored in. So before we jumped into the trial, we actually, we zeroed in from a bunch of probably 20 vendors. And we narrowed it down to two vendors. And then we kind of went towards one vendor. But before we jumped in with that, we actually bought four of those fixtures. We put them up on Wheeler Street. There's actually four fixtures on Wheeler. It's reasonably treed, so it's not over-treed and it's not untreated. So we thought it was a good average street to put four fixtures on. We didn't get any calls from anybody on Wheeler Street. It did a really nice job. And that was kind of, made us feel that we probably, you know, we made the right decision with the manufacturer. The other thing we did with this particular large purchase is we chose to go with a 3,000 Kelvin, not the four we did the original trial with. The latest work in Peabody Square, right around the monument and the pieces of Central, a little piece of Lowell, a little piece of Foster, and Main Street, probably just before Brothers. When that all got redone in that construction project, all of those lights are 3,000 K. There's also some medical evidence, not certainly conclusive medical evidence, but some that the brighter LEDs with a lot of blue in it tend to not be good for humans or animals. So we kind of shifted a bit towards the 3,000, and we think it was a good choice. So now, back to the project at hand. As we stand right now, we're about 400 fixtures in. Everything seems to be going pretty well. We haven't had many calls or complaints at all. I think we might have had one, and the person was spoken to, and I believe everything's all set. The streets that are done right now, and I'm not going to go into all of them, but just a couple of key areas. One that's completely done is Center Field, so Reed, Trask, and Downing, right near the Arboretum. Drove there myself the other night. It was pretty late. And I was very much impressed with what I saw. There's a fair amount of trees in there as well. And the trees end up masking a lot of the light, the way the light gets dispersed onto the street. And it's just kind of the way it is. One thing I did notice is the white light looked really good to me. The other thing about these LEDs is they don't use reflectors or refractors. So reflectors are shiny, typically shiny metal things that act like a mirror. And then a refractor is the, on the old lights, is the plastic lens or the glass lens that hangs down. And it's a bunch of prisms that end up bending the light. Well, both of those are pretty inefficient. So with the LEDs, they don't depend on reflectors or refractors. And they have a bunch of individual LEDs, and each LED has its own aiming mechanism that bends the light. And what that does for you is it minimizes the bright spot under the fixture, and it maximizes what was a dark spot in between fixtures. So it does a bit of averaging. And from what I saw on Center Field, I was very impressed with what I saw. The other piece of area that's done is Lowell Street between about Priscilla and Meadowview. So kind of near the Su Changs area. So Priscilla's the entrance to Rolling Hills. So right in that area, that's all done on the eastbound side only. We haven't gotten to the westbound side. Lowell Street's a tough area. We've got to work with police details. And so what we plan on doing is tackling all the way to downtown, and then we'll work our way west. Let's see. So in our program, there's 17 cities and towns, as I mentioned, that participated in the MMWEC grant. Talked about the color temperature. And I guess the only other thing I can say is that part of the grant is that anybody that participated had to follow the rules that are part of the grant. And one of them is that when the project is finished, we have to give the municipality, they have to end up with a 25 percent minimum savings on their street lighting account. And we fully expect to do that. We think that by the time all the capital costs get absorbed in and all settled out, we're going to have a brand-new rate in place. And it's probably going to be 30 to 38, 30 to 40 percent cheaper for the City of Peabody to light their streets than it is now. So that's about it. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. And if not, we'll get back to you with the answers.
Counselors, any questions? Councilman McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Samos, for the presentation. And this project is very interesting. I've had really good feedback on the lights in the vicinity of the monument. And I think that's what you're telling us we're going to, we'll see more of, right? Is that it's in that range, the 3,000 range?
Yes, it is.
So if people are wondering what it looks like, that's a really good place to sample I'm also of the understanding that you can, that one of the benefits of this lighting is that you can direct it more to a specific, to the area that you intend to light versus kind of a broader range on some of the other older lighting. Is that correct?
It is what they call 100 percent cutoff, which means that no light goes above 180. So unfortunately, with that refractor, that little globe that would hang down below the fixture to direct the light, you did get some back spill and side spill. And that should be very much minimized.
So this is, resident that might have one of these adjacent to a bedroom window or something like that, this is beneficial because it's going to be shining directly down on the street and the sidewalk versus splashing back on their house?
Yeah, not exactly all down. The pattern of the fixture, as what, we bought the exact same pattern that we had, which is what's called a roadway design B. It's kind of a rectangle, relatively shallow going across the street and relatively wide going linearly with the street. The good part about this design is that instead of having that big, bright spot right under the fixture, you're more efficiently getting that lighting out to the edges to fill in the gaps between where the next fixture would have left, between those two where you would have had a dark spot. We also bought, I'm not sure the exact number, a couple of hundred, what they call, side shades. So it's a little metal clip that goes on, or back shields. And just in case we get someone who calls and complains, we've been doing it for a long time. Unfortunately, it seems kind of rudimentary, but the way they were fixed with the HPS is the trucks had a spray, black spray paint in the truck. And they'd spray a little black paint on the inside of the shield. And that's really ineffective, because now that's doing nothing. So we can have this back shield that can direct some of that away from a home. We also bought a few cul-de-sac shields, which is like a side shield. I don't think we're going to have that problem. But we don't have individual adjustability where we can move the shape of that. That's all based on the design of the fixture, and that's not adjustable. However, you reminded me of an interesting point. This particular fixture we bought is a company called Leo Tech. And what they call the driver, which is the thing that makes the DC voltage to run the LEDs, we actually bought it with an adjustment feature. So the fixture, as we bought it, we, there's four adjustment levels that are built in just by moving a wire. And we ordered the fixture in such a fashion that we weren't at the bottom of a range of the lighting, and we weren't at the top of the range. We were somewhere in the middle, so we had somewhere to go. So if someone calls up and says, you know, boy, it's really dark over here now, we got at least one increment we can go brighter, and at least one increment we can go dimmer. If someone says, you know, boy, you're killing me here. It's way too bright. So we thought that was a good feature as well. And you pay a little more for it, but I think in the end, it's the best way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Samos. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Goode.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Samos, Mr. Tuera and team. I appreciate it. It's a pleasure to have the new lights in where I live, off of Gardner Street. It was, I feel like I wasn't paying attention because one night, we had beautiful new LED lights. And I was absolutely thrilled, as were my neighbors. And even with the trees that exist in Gardner Park, they were, they're just a pleasure to have, because it looks like you're really out there during daylight, even if it's midnight with the lights on. And I also want to thank Mr. Tuera for the response to a resident at Kenwood. We put, I say we, we put a light in on the wrong pole and straightened that out almost immediately. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Metzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just a little curious here. I hear about the grants that are involved in this and that. And I'm just a little curious as to what it's going to cost the light plant. Or is, there's no cost to the light plant? Is this 100 percent grant? What are we talking here?
Yeah, there's a substantial cost. As I mentioned, the fixture, really the only thing that's being paid for by the grant...
I can't hear you.
Really? Okay. The only thing that's being paid for by the grant is 50 percent of the cost of the fixture and 50 percent the cost of the photocell, the light controller that goes on top.
Okay, 50 percent of the cost of a fixture. Can I ask you, does the fixture cost 50 cents? How much is it?
No, no. A fixture is about $130 or so. And the photocell is about in the $20 range. So about $150, fixture and cell. So we're getting 75 of that from the grant. But then there's a lot of other costs that go with this. So...
Which?
Well, there's a lot of labor.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what I'm asking. Like, didn't you, haven't you figured out what your cost is going to be? I'm going to give you an example why I'm saying this. If your cost is going to be a couple million dollars or something. I mean, I'm sure you have the money, because the light plant has more money than I think the city has, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I'm only looking at, you know, what the cost is going to be. And one of the things that myself personally, I've been on the council many years, I've never gotten a complaint about streetlights. The only thing I got to complain about trees that cover up the lighting, you know. And one of the reasons I'm bringing this up, right? And I have a history of saying this, you know, and I'm not comfortable saying this, because I have a respect for everybody in this city, the light plant, everybody. But, you know, when it comes to tax time, we're always short of money. And we were looking not too long ago to install solar panels for the light plant. Where did that project go? You know, listen, I'm going to support you. I'm not here to criticize you or sound like a hard guy, but I'm going to support you, because I always do. But I want you to know, this is my message of saying, hey, get a little more serious to the city when it comes to tax time, because you people hold an awful lot of money. And you were created many years ago, you became autonomous, you had certain rules at that time, but the times have changed. And you have a lot of money. And I'm saying, be a little more generous to the City of Peabody. You know, and this has nothing to do with you, and I hope you don't take a personal. But you know what? I never get the opportunity to say this. And I'm taking the opportunity right now to say, you are part of the city. You know, when it comes to tax time, the mayor's always looking for a million here, a million there, and he's got to scrape it up somewhere, okay? And you people have been giving a stipend for many years, and it's not a big stipend. I think it's time you got a little more generous, because you're a pretty wealthy plant. And I'm going to support your project. But I wanted to let my feelings know. Okay? Thank you.
Absolutely, counsel.
Thank you.
The manager is here, and I'm sure he heard you. And the things you're talking about are way, way, way beyond my scope. I can say this, you're talking...
Listen, my message got out, and that's all I wanted it to do. Whether it got out through you or right to the light plant manager himself, that was my message.
Understood.
Thank you.
Well, you know, you mentioned about tax time and all that stuff, and taxes. And so what we're doing is saying that there's a very good likelihood that in the coming years, that there's going to be about a 30 to 40 percent decrease in the money that the City of Peabody is paying the light plant to light the public streets. That's, and our rates, our rates are very low. You probably saw the recent rate comparison we did. So we really do try our best. We're proud of what we do. And I think you'd be hard pressed to find a constituent who had a lot bad to say about the PMLP. I'm proud to work there. I've been there almost 23 and a half years. And we try to accommodate the City of Peabody as well as any single resident who calls us for a problem. Just one more thing, we're talking about the lights. These are expected to, you know, maybe you ask, how do you save this kind of money? The lights are expected to last 20 years, approximately 20 years. They have a 10-year warranty on them. With the HPS lights, we were doing a three-and-a-half-year relamping cycle. So that means every single bulb in the City of Peabody, every three-and-a-half years. And those aren't the ones that someone calls us and says, hey, my light in front of my house is out. This is a program. So 5,500-ish or so, every three-and-a-half years, every bulb, every eye got changed. So in a 20-year, that's about seven relamp cycles that we're not going to have to do. Truck rolls, fuel, labor, materials, Haz waste where we get rid of the bulbs. So that's where all the savings comes from, from eliminating truck rolls and all that labor that goes with it.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Metzulis?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, I'm going to, I just came in at the end of this, but it's, you know, time to get up to the new technology. But, you know, I understand where Counselor Metzulis is coming from. But, you know, I think the light plant has supported the city in lots of ways, financially and other ways. Who shoveled those roofs at the high school? Who snoobled those roofs during that horrible storm about three, four years ago? Electric light, they didn't ask anything for that. Who wires for the festival down here every year? Who does that? Who puts up all the banners? Who puts up all the wreaths? The light plant does. Who gave us a million dollars for the turf field? The light plant did. Who gives 20 percent back to the rate payers, which is huge? Which is huge. So I appreciate what you've done. And you give us, what, 650,000 a year on top of that? So if you want to give us more, that's great. If you don't, it is what it is. I think you guys do a great job supporting the city in many ways. It's not always financially that you do it. So I thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
I had just two quick questions or comments. I was talking with the plant manager, Glenn, before the meeting. Can you, you did have a number, Glenn. I don't want to say what it was, but you did quantify. How much money is the grant that we're getting? I think it's important that the citizens know it, and everyone in the room hear it. It's a great number.
So as Roy mentioned, the grant basically provides for half of the material costs. So when, sorry. So when we initially put in for the grant with the state, they granted us an amount up to $771,000. At the time, we thought the lights were going to cost a little bit more than they turned out to be. So once we picked a light after that, did the analysis, we believe that grant is going to settle out somewhere between 400 and 450,000 total. It all depends on how many we put up, how much it costs us, and if we get enough done in time for the expiration of the time limit on the grant.
Thank you. I think that was important, once again, to hear that number. I appreciate that. I know everyone else does, too. And the other question I had was, we got in the parks in the city. Are the parks going to be replaced with these LEDs? Are they already there? I'm not too sure.
So the public lighting is a little bit different than area lighting, right? So the public lighting is the high-pressure sodium lights. When you get into off-street lighting, whether it's a parking lot, it's a... lighting, whether it's a parking lot, it's a ball field or something like that, you get into some, a different type of light. We do offer high-pressure sodium floodlights. We offer metal halide floodlights. And currently, with this new technology we're getting into, we're looking to come up with an LED floodlight option as well. When you get into ballpark lighting and things like that, that's a completely different animal. Different types of lights, different strengths. The grant that came out was strictly earmarked for public roadway lighting only, and that, that specific type of fixture.
Thank you. And then lastly, I didn't, I didn't know, were you, now, were you going to talk about the manual meter program, or is that, did you have a different person talking about that? Or did you want to add anything about that?
I can talk about that. I know we're, maybe you're a little pressed for time, so I'll try to be brief. Before I get into the, the meter discussion, I, I hear the counselor and his concerns. I hear him loud and clear. I'm going to take that information. I'm going to bring it back, and I'm going to discuss that with the Lighting Commission. So in terms of the, the meter project, so the PMLP is the electric service provider for Peabody and half of Lynn Field. Within that territory, we have about 26,000 electric meters. And we bill all of our customers once a month, and the billing is for the, you know, the prior month's electric usage. And since we've been in business, we've had this old, very manual, labor-intensive type of meter reading and billing operation, where we have meter readers that walk the streets every day. They go from house to house, business to business, manual reads, plug them into a handheld recorder, and then bring them back to the office and download them. So that's a very inefficient, outdated type of system. And we started looking a few years ago into some of the new systems, and decided that we, we would put in a fully automated meter system, which means it's a, a fully automated two-way communication system. It's basically a computer at the office, talks to every meter in the system through a radio system. And all of the meters, however, have to be changed, because they have to have the capability to be able to, to communicate over that radio system with the head end. So we embarked on that project a few years ago. A lot of planning and, and bid process and that type of stuff went into it. We got to the position this year where we actually started deploying the system. We put the radio system into beginning of the year, started the meter replacements in March, and hoped to have all 26,000 meters replaced by the end of the year, early next year. Presently, we have about 14,600 meters replaced, which is about 55% of, of the system. So we're moving along pretty well. But, you know, in addition to the fact that the system was old and antiquated, there are a number of very beneficial reasons for doing this. First of all, the new system is very efficient. We don't have any of the issues we would have with potentially human error, someone punching a wrong reading in, or the handheld's going bad, or when we had a particularly bad winter, it was difficult for the meter readers to get to two, three feet of snow to get to the houses in time to read, you know, 1,200 meters a day. So we'd, we'd have to do a lot of estimating. So all of those issues will, will go away. It's also going to save us a substantial amount of money. There is a capital contribution upfront to pay for the system, but lower operating costs going forward, because we're not going to need four meter readers that are going to have to walk the streets every day, and all the ancillary equipment, cars, gasoline, insurance, and those types of things that, that support the manual meter reading function. Other benefits are that we're going to be able to talk to these meters anytime we want. We're also going to be able to use the meters to shut off customers remotely. So we don't have to send our people out to a site to pull a meter and, and have to deal with a potentially angry customer when we have to go through that process. So it'll be a, a safer process. We'll be able to do everything remotely. And the fact that they can talk to us, it's going to help us deal with outages, because right now, what we have to do is, when we have an outage, we have to wait for someone to call us on the phone and say, hey, my power's out on such and such a street. When the power goes out to these meters, they automatically communicate to us. So we should have a quicker response time in terms of outages and whatnot as well. The very last thing, benefit of the system is, we currently put in a, a new customer portal, so people can get on the computer, get into the system. Once we get this system in place, they'll be able to get in to the software. They'll be able to look at their bill. They'll be able to look at their usage. So if anybody has concerns about how much power they used last month or last week, a lot of the information will be there so that we can help them through that process. So we feel there's a tremendous amount of benefits to the system. And as I said, we just kind of wanted to make you aware of what we're doing, where we're going, where we are with these projects.
Counselors, anyone else? Thank you, Glenn, for coming down. Appreciate it and the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we're going to have another, this was not on your, this is not on the agenda, but it's time-sensitive. So, Mr. May, if you come up and talk about hearing in the auditorium, lights and audio and visual.
Okay. Well, good evening, counselors, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Initially, we were going to put this in the form of a memo, memo, and provide it to all of you prior to tonight's meeting. However, we thought it best to just come in and maybe speak about the project. And I think it's a project all of you are familiar with. It's very exciting, much anticipated, a long-time coming project to make some, make some repairs, make some additions to the auditorium here. We are going, I'm going to, in a moment, invite up our consultant to come and speak, but we're going to be doing an overhaul of our sound system. So hopefully, this will be the last time that people struggle to be heard or to hear what is taking place at the council chambers. Audiovisual system, a projector, and also doing some repair work, much-needed repair and plastering work to our roof. Just to give quick background, we have $237,000 that we have in our kitty for this project. That was obtained through some capital funding, but also it was a $102,000 grant that we got, we received from the Massachusetts Cultural Council. And I want to thank Julie Daigle, Karen Conard, for that work and getting that money. So we started with $237,000 to do that work. We felt we needed some expertise, and we went ahead and hired a consultant to kind of put together the plans for us. Before I introduce the consultant, I want to thank our purchasing agent, Dan Doucette, who's been working very hard on this, as well as Tim Healy, our facilities director, and Kurt Bellevance has been intimately involved in this as well. And I want to thank Counselor Gravell, who's been a big part of this project and has been, I know, trumpeting this work for a number of years. I think when all's said and done, we're going to be able to utilize this auditorium for many more events, make it more of a community center. Concerts, performances, movie nights. You know, once this work is done, we're going to have a, really, a first-rate auditorium here. And I think we'll be able to generate some revenue, but also just continue to try to bring people down here to go to the restaurants and shops. And I'm very excited about this project. So the gentleman we hired is from By Request Communications. He's done an outstanding job for us. And he's going to give an overview of the sound system, AV, and the projector. By Right Communic, By Request Communications, David Hera Lambo, but we call him Shaq. I always wanted to meet the real Shaq, but this, this Shaq will do fine. But I wanted to thank him, and certainly, he's here to maybe give him an overview of the work that's going to, that's going to be set to start next week. And again, hopefully, this is the last meeting. We have sound problems, and people have to strain to hear. So Dave, you want to come up and just give an overview? And certainly, I'm available to answer any questions, as is Dave. But I wanted to thank the counselors for, for allowing us to come in and make the presentation before the work starts next week.
How's everybody doing? Can you actually hear me? Almost hear me. Hopefully, next month, you'll be able to hear me even better. But not me. You'll hear whoever's in here giving a presentation. There's a couple of things we're doing. First, just a little background, myself, I'll, I'll be quick. I've got 30 years of broadcast television experience, done everything from Super Bowls on down for remote television and audio production, including working for WWE, the wrestling guys. That was like running away and joining the circus for a while, so that was fun. So my background is as a systems integrator, which is the person who comes in and does the work. And I do consulting as well. I am consulting on this job, so I do not bid on the job, which means I have a total non-interest in terms of conflict of who does the work. And my interests are your interests, to make sure that you get the best value for the dollar and get a system that works the way you need it to work, so that you can actually hear people, have conversations between yourselves, and actually hear each other, and have a room that you can be proud of when you do larger events, and have an audio system that can actually support the room, this, this fabulous room that you guys have to start with. So a couple of things that we're doing. The audio system has already gone out and is scheduled for install already. The pieces that we're getting for that, basically, everything that's audio in this room is going away. We're starting over. Technology has changed. This system was originally installed in the late 80s. It's been updated a few times over the years, but technology has changed in the business. They've gotten much smarter, much more controllable to deal with rooms like this, that have lots of hard surfaces and lots of windows, all things that make getting clear, intelligible sound into a room very difficult. So the, the main thing that you're going to notice in the room is, we're going to have two new speakers that are almost going to be the size of that green space, one on each side. And they're what's called a line array type speaker. And what that allows us to do is steer the sound right where we need it. So we don't excite the room like we're doing now, where you hear all that echo in the back of the room. We can actually cut that sound off, so that the sound is only directed right where people are actually sitting and listening and need to be heard. So that's going to be a huge difference right there, just in that one piece. Part of that is, the sound system has presets that you can just walk in, hit the preset, and it can be as simple as a single mic on the stage, ready to go for a, a presentation. Or it can be more complicated, like the, the council meetings and board meetings and various different meetings that you hold in the space, or as large as the larger events that you hold with a full orchestra and things like that for larger fundraisers and, and various events that have come in. So the, the main speakers will cover the bulk of the room. There are two smaller speakers that will be up on the poles, similar to the two that are up there now to fill in the back balcony. With what's nice about the new steerable technology is that we'll actually be able to turn the sound off in the balcony, so that the sound will only be down here at the bottom of the floor, when we only need the bottom of the floor. When we have people up in the balcony, we'll turn the sound on in the balcony, and we'll excite the room more. You'll have a simple volume control that'll allow you to adjust for the amount of people in the room. If the room's really full, we'll be able to turn the volume up. If the room is empty or light like it is tonight, you'll be able to crank it down a little bit, and you don't need to excite the room any more than you have to. So that'll be a nice change of pace. It's not just a fixed system. The counselors, you folks will really enjoy the fact that you're going to have a new wireless unit in front of each of you. That wireless unit has a speaker built into it that allows, for instance, yourself to hear everybody else talking right in front of you, except for yourself. So you won't hear the feedback when your mic is on. As many mics that turn on can turn on, but the system manages them and mutes them automatically. You can mechanically turn them on and off, as you're doing now, so still have the privacy. There is a chairman's unit that will be able to override everybody. So the chairman will have full control over the meeting, which is a nice feature. But the units themselves are a little bit bigger than the ones you have now, but are wireless, which means when the room changes, so that you have a row of people up front, or you have a row of people on the sides, or you're doing the U shape that you're doing now, you'll be able to deploy these wireless units in different configurations. And they will automatically adjust for what you're doing. So if you've got 15 potential counselors in a meeting, or people in a meeting, each will have their own microphone with their own speaker in front of them, and it'll automatically generate audio in front of you. So counselors on the far side will be able to hear the folks on this side and vice versa, much better than you can today, without relying on the PA speakers to be the audio that you hear. So I think you'll notice a big change in how you can hear the audio. The other thing is, in 40 years, the intelligibility of the systems has changed dramatically. And we're, we crafted this system in particular for intelligibility. That was the number-one thing we were after, was to make sure that it was clear, that there was a lot of clarity to the system, that you'd be able to, in, the intelligibility factor would be very high for speech. That was one of the main things we went after. In that process, the system that was selected was a Bose audio system. Bose did some reengineering on it between the time we awarded it and the time they actually certified the system for us. The good news was, they came back and added some features. We now are having a couple of subwoofers added to the system, again, at no extra cost beyond what was originally bid. So that was great. And that allows us to really have music with the system much better than we originally intended. So that'll be a nice feature. There's a new rack going in, basically in the same place that the existing rack is going in. There's a FM tuner, a CD player, a USB stick for audio, all sorts of different audio things. So if you're doing a dinner-type thing in here, you can have background music now, which you can't do easily now without bringing in a sound company. You won't have to do that nearly as much as you did before. We're putting in tie lines up to the balcony, so that if a sound company comes in, they'll be able to plug into those tie lines down to the stage and use the system that's already here, so they won't have to bring as much audio when they come in to do events, which should reduce costs when you're doing those events. The number of times that they will need to come in, hopefully, will be significantly less, because you'll now have a PA system that can handle most of the events in the room. So that'll be an improvement over where we are today with the level of the quality. So that's, that's the audio system. There's all sorts of inputs being put in for different things, and microphones, and all that kind of stuff, all the traditional stuff you'd expect. The speakers themselves, that'll be in the green areas, will be, originally will come in as white speakers, but they are paintable. And I know Julie has been working at possibility of getting that put in, so that we can get them painted to match the green that's already there, in which case, they'll just about disappear in terms of the looks of the room, which was also something that was a big consideration when we were looking at different sound systems, was to make sure it fit the room aesthetically as well. Is there any questions on the sound system portion of it?
Counselors?
Does it mean I was comfortable with the mic, huh?
So, just one, one note. The, we did look at a couple of different companies when we originally wrote the spec. I wrote the spec without seeing anything from any of the companies. The companies then responded to our spec, and we ended up picking a company called Signet. Felt very, very comfortable with the decision with them, with the quality of their engineering, on their return to us, on their response. And with working with them through the, the process of certifying the final system, they were very responsive and really seemed to, Bose really stepped up to, to really want to get this system in here. And they did a very good engineering job on the sound system. So we were really impressed with that and how that went. And I believe the final was about $85,000 for the sound system, which may sound like a lot. I know that's, that's probably a, a big number. But the reality is, you've all sat here, you've heard presentations, you've heard how hard it is to hear people. That's been the number-one complaint. This is the first meeting I've actually sat in, and I can't believe you've been trying to deal with this. This is tough. This is really a hard way to hear and do presentations. So I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised when we get this in, at how much better you'll be able to hear, and how much better the audience will be able to hear what's going on as well. So that was the first piece of it.
We did have one question. Can we ensure that the stenographer will be able to plug in with earphones and hear audio from counselors' mics and podium mics?
We actually have, the nice thing about the new system that will be going out here in front of all the counselors is, it also takes a feed from the PA. So if somebody's giving a presentation, or there's a podium mic or something else like that, it will feed back into the system in front of all the counselors as well, in addition to the PA. And the box that is the microphone for the counselors also has headphone jacks on it. So if anybody wants to wear an earpiece or something like that, i.e. a stenographer or any sort of recording device, will be capable of plugging into the system as well, either way. And yes, you will be able to wear headphones with that or wirelessly. I should also note, the other part of this is, because this room has more than occupancy of more than 50 people, currently, it does not meet the ADA standards for listening, assistive listening devices. And we've included that in the system as well, which is also an option for the recordist to be able to just wear one of the listening stations and be able to hear the entire PA that way as well. So that has, that was also part of the sound project to upgrade, and that's an RF wireless- project to upgrade, and that's an RF wireless ADA system.
So for the people who are hard of hearing, if they attend a meeting, which we have, people tend, will they be able to turn into a frequency, or how will they know where to go to be able to pick up the meeting?
They'll just get a little box from, you'll have a box of little receivers with headphones in them that you can just hand out to people as they need them. I believe there were 20 in there, 20 or, no, there was more than that. They had more on the last, yeah. There's quite a, more than you'll ever need, they included with it. So you should be fine with that, yeah. So we've addressed that as well.
Thank you. Peter?
Counselor McGinn?
I didn't mean to jump ahead of you, Counselor Gravel. I'm sure you must have something to say on this.
I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
The most outspoken counselor on this, I put up my hand before I gave him an opportunity to speak, so I defer to Counselor Gravel.
I was gonna wait till after the AV piece, but there was a question that people were worried about, because the existing system requires, you know, if you touch something in the box, if you don't put it back the way it was, it can be a big headache for a lot of people. And the beauty of the new system is that it has pre-designed presets. So you take away a lot of that mystery about, you know, which one of these knobs is gonna control the master volume, which one's gonna control the speakers, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, you know, I believe it's going to have a meeting preset, a concert preset, an event presets, just to direct the sound itself. I've heard these speakers. You couldn't have picked a better speaker for the system that we're talking about. The digital technology in them is amazing, in terms of how it deflects sound, and how it makes the sound almost stop in certain areas, where right now, as you say, you have to live in the room, you almost have to, the only control you have here is volume, you know, and the more you crank it up, the more you echo it. This sort of pushes the sound, and it's a beautiful system. I'm glad we picked it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gravel. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. This may be something you already considered, but I know St. John's, which is right next door, the church right next door, has a wireless system. And when they installed it, they had some interference with some other systems in the vicinity. They could actually be heard elsewhere. So I'm not sure if you checked with St. John's regarding frequency, or, you know, that, we won't be hearing what's going on at St. John's, and they're not gonna be hearing what's going on in the council chambers, et cetera. I'm sure that's something that you would evaluate, but I just wanted to point it out, because they're literally right next door.
Yeah, let me address that. So the wireless system for the counselors for the meetings that we've addressed, first of all, it's a digital wireless system, as opposed to an analog wireless system. So it's a encrypted audio that only that unit to the receiver can talk to each other. It's the same system that they use at the UN. If that gives you any confidence in terms of the quality of the wireless, it's that level of quality. It's made by Sennheiser. There are a number of systems out there. From a wireless perspective, it is by far the best system in terms of audio quality, signal to noise, and the various aspects of the audio that we're concerned about. The other reason we went with the wireless is because you use this room in so many different ways, between the, you know, the single line array, up on the stage with a meeting group, down here in the U shape, down here in the straight line. All of those different configurations, if we were doing this with a wired system, makes it much more cumbersome, much more difficult to set up and take down for every event. So that obviously adds cost to doing every event. So the wireless system should make that much simpler, much cleaner, and the quality of the Sennheiser is just amazing, to say the least. I can fully be happy that we went with that system. So I think you'll be happy with that.
Yes, no, I'm sure. I mean, it sounds like a full-featured system. I just, I'm just, again, I'm asking, is there any reason to, is there any concern about the possibility of interference? You're saying it's encrypted digital, there's no way it could interfere with their system and vice versa?
No, the system's the way that, the way this is designed, it only has the ability to talk to its receiver. It doesn't even have the ability to be picked up by another receiver because of the digital encryption that they use between the transmitters and the receivers. So it's very secure. Not, they're not gonna hear you, and you're not gonna hear them. Some of the lower-cost systems do have that problem, and especially when you get up into 13, 14, 15 wireless microphones, it becomes a serious frequency coordination issue in the area. This does not have that issue, being the digital wireless that it is.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President.
And did you wanna give a brief present on the audio part, excuse me, the visual part of it?
Yeah, so the audio, we had pretty much figured out, and then it was approached to us that the video portion, that we'd like to move forward on some of the video options. So video in this room seems relatively straightforward, but it's actually kinda tricky. There's a few things going on in this room. First off, the meeting in the setup like you have now, to give a presentation is kinda tough. You have to all turn around, look up at the screen that's 45 feet away, you know, and it's small, which means putting up an Excel spreadsheet or something like that is tough to read at that distance. So a couple of the things that we've looked at is, you actually have two different uses for video in this room. The first is for meetings and general council meetings, small training sessions, things of that nature. The second is for what we call event video, showing a movie night, having your holiday concert, where they use the video as a background for the concert, for the video, for the music that's going on. So there's really two very different applications. So what we've proposed is to address that in two different ways. The first was, for meetings, we've proposed hanging a screen up underneath where that camera is now, and enclosing it, so it'll look like part of the woodwork, so it doesn't, you know, stand out. It'll fit the decorum of the facility. And using a portable projector, that allows you guys to, and gals, to use, to do presentations, have somebody come in and do a presentation, and have it very close, easily seen by the audience, easily seen by the counselors. And if you're doing training, you can have it right up enclosed to what you're doing. If you're using a laser pointer, it's easy to get to. The second part of it was to put a, what we call a permanent projector in. That would be located up in the balcony, and would actually shoot the other way to the stage area. There were a couple of options on the stage that we've talked about. One is to just replace the current screen where it's located with another flat screen. The screen that's up there now is what's called a four-by-three screen. If you had an old television set, that was the shape of your old television. Nothing wrong with it, it's just, the world has changed again. You know, again, technology has moved on. We now do what's called 16 by 9, or 16 by 10, which is the widescreen cinema format of your HDTV at home, if you have one, and movies. So it's a much wider screen. So part of the proposal is to replace that screen with a wider screen, either a fixed screen or a motorized screen. I think at this point, we're leaning towards a motorized screen, because it's more protected, it gets it up out of the way. If there's a problem, you know, if something hits the back wall, it doesn't wreck your brand-new screen. It's always up in a concealed, protected position until you're using it. The other thing we talked about was moving the screen forward slightly. If you notice in this room with the screen at the back wall, one of the problems is, once you get past about that location and that location, you can't see the screen, because it's too deep on the stage. So we've talked about moving the screen forward a few feet, about six to 10 feet forward, which will make a big difference in terms of the viewing angle within the auditorium, to get as much viewing angle as we can out of it. And yet, still be able to sit an orchestra in front of it, or a chorus, or something like that, for those type of events. The projectors that we're proposing are laser-based projectors, which have a minimum 15,000-hour bulb life, so to speak, if you wanna call it a bulb life, similar to the LEDs they were talking about earlier with the lasers. Traditionally, with a bulb-based projector, from the day you turn it on, the bulb starts to get dimmer. And over the life of the projector, you have to change the bulb, and then it starts to get dimmer again from the next hour you turn it on. With a laser projector, the brightness is constant through the entire life of the projector. It doesn't change until almost the very end, where it'll start to finally dim, but that's 15,000 to 20,000 hours later. That's a lot of projector life. Even if they leave it on a few nights here and there, you're still gonna be okay. So very little maintenance on these projectors, which is a big reason for promoting the laser-based projectors.
Thank you. Counselors? Counselor Gravel?
Yeah, the, this is really a thrill to hear that this is finally getting addressed. I appreciate the work you've done, Dan, the work you've done, Mayor, the work you've done. You know, the one thing we asked before was, give us a first-class capability in this auditorium, clean up the look, and also give us the ability to utilize the space, which, when most people come in here, if they haven't been up here before, they're amazed that this beautiful space exists. And to have it in such limited use, this could be a hub spot, you know, we're building a black box theater. This could be a theater unto its own. And again, it attracts people to the downtown and gets them engaged in a community that they rightfully should be engaged in. Having looked at the equipment that was selected, and looked at particularly in the, both the sound and in the, in the visual, you couldn't have found better equipment. I mean, it just is, it's some of the best that the industry provides right now. That laser projector, I believe it's 7,000 lumen, is-
Yeah, the main projector is 7,000.
Is incredibly capable, and able to project near high-def, if not high-def and more. You know, having purchased one myself for my own facility, I can tell you that, you know, we can almost get ultra-high-def out of them, even though they're not rated as such. They also put into the bid, spec, the Creston controls, which will look like little, they're little screen devices that will be positioned in the auditorium, that if you drop, if you wanna drop the screen, you hit, you know, the projector, and the screen comes down, the projector automatically turns itself on. And you'll have plug-in sources that are located in the auditorium, that you could plug in your computer or device that you're projecting from. I also saw in the spec for the visual, I saw that they were looking at some airplay capabilities, which means that you can almost, you can do wireless projection up into the projector onto the screen. So there's a lot of capability that's being built there, and it's capability that I think has a good, long shelf life. So I wanna thank the mayor, and thank Dan, and thank the council for supporting this. You won't have to listen to me complain anymore. It's like Barry, I've kinda lost my, one of my main complaints. He got a lake, I got an AV system. And I think, I think it's gonna be a thrill. And I'm looking forward to the first movie night that we sponsor here, because I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be great for the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gravel.
Just a quick comment on that. On these laser projectors, the startup time is six seconds to full brightness from off, which means you don't have to wait 20 minutes for it to get up to temperature to see a video. In six seconds, you'll have full brightness on the screen, ready to go. So that was the first thing. And yes, it is HD. It's actually 1920 by 1200 resolution, which is full HD resolution. We did not spec 4K. That is a price point that honestly, we couldn't justify for the space at this time. The price point to jump on the projector is almost about four times to go up to 4K. And honestly, HD will be fine for 98% of what you're trying to do.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna have a motion to close the committee in the hall. I'm gonna take a five-minute brief, very brief recess, please.